There's nothing new under the sun, Daniel. What else is there to say?
I'm Lou Bear, the League of Women Voters of Lynn County. The League is a nonprofit volunteer political organization which neither supports nor poses any candidate or political party. The League encourages citizens' participation in government and is open to any citizen 16 years and older. The forum is part of our voter education efforts and we will go over the course of this program. You will learn more about the candidates and what they hope to do for our city, Cedar Rapids. I've got to tell you, this is my first time on this side of the microphone and not over there and it's really quite fun. And I'd really like to welcome our candidates tonight. We've got Dale Todd, Justin Wasson, and Keith Rippey who are running for the office of Cedar Rapids City Council District Three. I will start by explaining some of the procedures which each candidate did receive ahead of time. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement, two minutes for a closing statement, two, one minute for rebuttals, and one minute to answer each question. Openings, statements will be done in the order of Dale, Keith, and Justin. And I asked them if it was okay if I can just use their first names. And the numbers were drawn out of a hat. We have timekeepers right here, you guys, so when you're answering questions, they'll hold up your 30 seconds, your 15 seconds, and when they hold up, stop. You need to stop and even if it's mid-sentence, we really do want you to because we want to get to as many questions that we can possibly do. We ask that each candidate combine their statements and responses to relevant issues and refrain from any personal attacks. Please, we've got a couple of people recording tonight. We've got Robin Cash with the Neighborhood Network and we also have Pro Video who will be streaming this and will put it on YouTube and on a Facebook page for the League of Women Voters. I'll ask you to turn off your cellphones. And if at any time you can't hear me or the candidates, would you please wave your arm or something so we know or let the League member know? Right now, we don't have the three candidates miked, but our understanding is that this particular auditorium that you can hear really well, but if you can't, I'll take this microphone. It looks like we've got a long board and we'll share it. We request that you treat all candidates fairly. Please remain quiet throughout the forum, which means no clapping, none of that stuff, guys. And you are encouraged to submit questions for the candidates on the provided pieces of paper. And questions must be addressed to all candidates and must apply to issues or qualifications for this particular office. Raise your hand if you'd like another piece of paper or if you'd like to have your question collected. I will read as many questions as time allows, sometimes combining simpler questions striving to cover as many topics as we can. I think we're ready to start and we'll start with the candidates for their two-minute opening statements. And as I said before, Dale, you will go first.
So I know that because I was the last one here, you two fixed it so I'd be the first off the bat, but...
Yes, we did.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for this forum tonight. I really hope that we have the opportunity to talk about policy and the future of this community. That's why I'm running for office. I came here to Cedar Rapids in 1974 and have been here ever since. I've been involved in a host of issues. I am committed to see in this city forward. And I think we're at an interesting point in the future of our city. We're at a crossroads. We've got neighborhood issues that have been out there for quite some time that I don't think we've effectively dealt with as a community. And then we have significant issues about growth and development and where do we go as a community in the next five, 10, 15, 20 years? My son attends Washington High School here. He had his last cross-country meet today, so that's why I was late. But I've got a commitment to this community and I'm really honored to be up here with these candidates and in this forum, and I'm looking forward to talking about the issues tonight.
Thank you. Next, we've got Keith.
Yes, my name's Keith Rippey and I've lived in Cedar Rapids for the last 12 years. My day job, I'm the CEO of Area Ambulance Service. During my 12 years here, I lived down in the Newbo district, moved into Bottle Works condominiums in the year of the flood. I was one of the first residents to move into that building. I since moved out of there and I live on Second Street, also down in the Newbo area. I've been involved in a whole variety of different community committees and commissions throughout my time here. I sit on the Civil Rights Commission right now. I'm on the Board of the Mission of Hope and Horizons, the Sixth Judicial District as well. I agree with Dale. We've got some challenging, exciting times ahead of us. We've got some infrastructure issues to deal with. We've got flood protection. We've got quality of life issues, including public safety in our neighborhoods. When we have John Madden, the former football coach of the Oakland Raiders, said, "We're only as good as our last man." We have, when we have core neighborhoods that are in distress, we need to address those, we need to address those issues. We're only as good as our neighborhoods and we have a lot of distress, particularly in the Third District in some of our neighborhoods, and I want to address those if I were elected to City Council. Lastly, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters as well for hosting this tonight and I look forward to the opportunity to answer their questions.
Justin?
Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. My name's Justin Wasson. I've been heavily involved in the community for the last several years. This includes things like being the president of the Wellington Heights Neighborhood Association. It's actually where I know a lot of you from. I've also been involved with the Boys and Girls Club, the Sixth Judicial District, a new organization starting called Sunshine Learning Academy, and a whole number of other organizations that I've really enjoyed getting to work with over the last several years. But I decided that it was time to take a step up and take these leadership experiences that I've had over the last several years and run for City Council. I'm running because I want to move our city forward and I'm running because on November 8th, my wife is due with our first child. Our first boy, Dexter James Wasson, is going to be born probably the day after the election, sometime around there. And when he grows up, I want him to want to live in Cedar Rapids. I want Cedar Rapids to be the number-one place he thinks of when he decides where he wants to raise his family. I know it's the number-one place I want to raise my family as we slowly grow, and I want to take the opportunities on the council to harvest all the great things we have and really let our city shine. I'm going to stay after this forum for a while, and I know several of you will have questions that didn't get answered, and I want to answer them. I'm going to stay for a while after and I want to answer them individually because I know there's only so much time and I want to be able to contact each one of you and let you know my opinions on how we can move this city forward. So thanks again for coming out tonight. I really appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. And we've got a couple of questions here regarding casinos. And first will be Keith. Here we go. If a casino license is not approved, what are your ideas for that parcel of land? I would like to see a type of grocery store, community food bank, to enhance what Matthew 25 and others are doing. Keith?
I think there's a lot of different opportunities for development downtown. There's a lot of different properties that are available down in the downtown district, which is a key part of District Three, of course. I would support, as I lived down there for the last nine years, I would certainly look for some sort of a grocery store. The problem with development in that regard, retail development in particular, is does the population have to come first or does the retail come first? And that's the struggle that we've had for the last several years in trying to draw retail establishments to the Newbo area, downtown, and so forth. So I would look to try to do some, to incentivize and encourage more retail development downtown, Newbo, and in check Billy as well.
Justin?
That parcel of land's sat empty since the flood, and it's land that the city's maintaining and has maintained for several years. And I think it's time we get it back on the tax rolls. And I think this is a great question. How can we best use that land to move our city forward? That land's really valuable. It's right next to downtown. It's on First Avenue, and we need to develop it. I wish it could have gotten developed sooner, and it's important for the city to make sure we reach out with a broad range of proposals and make sure we get the best thing on that parcel of land.
Thank you, and Dale?
This is where there might be an area difference, and this is where experience comes in. It is appropriate, at least it's my belief, that it's appropriate for a city to periodically land bank land. We did that with the Sinclair site. For many years, we did not develop it. We did it, we've done that with other parcels. That is a critical piece to downtown. And while it would be nice to get in on the tax roll, what is, what would be best is to get in on the tax roll with the right use and not what we think is a short-term solution to what is a vacant piece of land right now that geese love more than anything. I was involved in the efforts to keep First Avenue high V here in town. And what we, what I did at the time, we did a food study and determined that there's a food desert in that area. And Keith is right, there simply is no mass there to bring to justify a large investment from a store at that location.
Thank you. We have another question on casinos that I'm going to go ahead and combine these two. So it's a two-part one, and we're going to go with Justin first. Do you favor a Cedar Rapids casino and do you have any preference on the plans that are out there?
When the vote happened several years ago, I actually, I voted against the casino and I was in the minority. And I accept that I was in the minority, and as such, on the City Council, I would not be overly opposed to a casino coming into town because I think it would be my responsibility as a council member to support what the community wanted. I don't have a strong preference, but I think that there is opportunity where if we get one of the casinos, for example, the Wild Rose, then we'll still have that parcel of land that we were just talking about that can be developed. So I think we could get two projects if we got one of the smaller downtown casinos.
Keith? No, Dale, sorry.
I, similar to what Justin said, the citizens of Cedar Rapids voted for a casino. I've been pretty ambivalent one way or the other. I think the data shows that it's not the economic driver that historically people have portrayed it as, but as an option for people to do things, you know, I would probably, I would support the continued efforts. I don't see things happening in our favor at this point in time, but again, I would support the voters.
Great. Question number three, this has to do with...
Wait a second, Keith.
Keith?
Yeah. Thank you.
Just keep me on task, guys. It's all right.
I'm the current president of the Lynn County Gaming Association. That is the not-for-profit committee that would hold the gaming license and receive the funds, the 3% to 5% of the funds that are earmarked to come off of the profits to go back into the community through a variety of different grants, much in a similar fashion as United Way does, but these, these funds would be allocated for local, local not-for-profits alone. So based upon the fact that I've been in that position since Cedar Crossings started, I certainly support a casino. I absolutely support being able to direct those funds locally back into this community for a variety of not-for-profit organizations that are certainly in need of additional funds.
Okay. We'll move on to the next question of which Dale, you're going to take first, and this is underneath the nuisance properties. Do you feel the nuisance property program is working and what would you do differently?
I, I'm a, I was on the early nuisance abatement task force, the Chapter 22 Task Force. Historically, when we've tried to stabilize neighborhoods, no matter how strong we were on the criminal front, I did not have a tool that I could use against absentee slum and slum landlords. And so the nuisance abatement ordinance, it's in place. I believe it's working fine. I chaired a group of mental health professionals who analyzed every call that went into the police department and looked for the impact that it would have on people with disabilities or mental illness. We were not able to determine that there were any trends in a negative way that way. Currently, I saw Kevin Sabati, who runs the Building Department at the cross-country meet. There are between 900 and 1,000 active cases that are on file with the city of Cedar Rapids. You can't move the city forward unless you can stabilize these neighborhoods. It's a tool that we use.
Keith?
Yes, I participate in the Public Safety Committee in which police, fire, buildings, and ambulance report to three members of the City Council. And so I'm very familiar with the abatement notice and the abatement ordinances and their effect. And each quarter that Safe CR reports out, they have, they've achieved significant results. They've gotten several hundred out-of-compliance landlords to become in compliance. They have levied and received several thousand dollars in fines. And as a member of the Civil Rights Commission, I can tell you that we've not had one civil rights complaint come through as a result of either one of those two ordinances. So I think it's been very, very successful and has achieved the desired result that the council intended.
Just says a number of other ordinances. I think there's some pros and cons to the nuisance abatement ordinance. I think there are some parts of it that are good. I think there's some parts of it that are not so desirable. I'm not a big fan of penalizing a piece of property. I'm also not a big fan of, there was a debate over the domestic abuse side of it, where a person who is being abused in their house potentially facing penalties. So I know that there's some issues with it. I'd like to see it changed a bit. And I'd also like to see a different approach. You know, in my neighborhood in Wellington Heights with the high poverty rate, one of the biggest problems we have is so many chopped-up houses. Drive down Third Avenue, how many houses have four, six mailboxes out front? I want to attack that problem. Let's revert a lot of these houses back to single-family. Let's make the properties desirable again. That will attract good people and help improve our neighborhoods.
The next one's on housing. And what would you do to encourage housing diversity by supporting small operators? And Keith, you go first on this.
Well, I think that we have a serious lack of affordable housing in the single-family type throughout our district. And it makes sense to, far more sense to infill in those neighborhoods with compatible housing. And I agree with Justin, multiple chopped-up houses is not, is not the way in which, not the approach that we need to take. Encouraging single-family affordable housing is exactly what we need to do, and we need to come up with some incentives that are similar to how we incentivize developers downtown in TIF districts and that sort of thing to encourage that kind of development. It's far less expensive to go infill where there's already streets, sidewalks, sewers, streetlights than it is, than it is to build new out on the edges of our city.
One of the areas where Cedar Rapids has the biggest deficit in housing is low-income apartment-style housing, which is why we have so many chopped-up houses still. There's demand for that type of living. I think, for example, the Commonwealth Apartments, many of you probably know the Commonwealth. It's two blocks from my house. That building went over an extensive remodel. It's 84 units. Those 84 units filled up within about three months. So there's a huge demand for that type of housing. If we want to see, like I mentioned earlier, some of these houses reverting back to single-family from being cut up, we've got to provide a space where the people who are living in those cut-up houses can go. I think the Crestwood Ridge is an important project to furthering that goal. I think there's a lot of ways that we can provide the adequate housing that's not only healthy for neighborhoods, but it's good for these people. Let's design these houses for these low-income people so that it's good for them, too.
Dale?
I just, I'm going to take a couple of seconds. The format, which, with this format, what you're getting, you're getting a soundbite. And these are incredibly complicated questions. The nuisance abatement ordinance, there are numerous sides to that, and to give it justice in a minute really doesn't give it justice. To give housing justice in a minute, affordable housing really doesn't do it justice. But A, make neighborhoods safe. The housing stock in my neighborhood in Wellington Heights is great housing stock, but the perception is that it's not a safe neighborhood. Clean that up, rehab it, and people will move into it, okay? One of the other things, though, that's going on, and this is why the nuisance abatement ordinance is important, what is going on in some of these neighborhoods, including the northwest side, which is part of our district, you have a subgroup of landlords that are buying up rental properties and they're doing a lousy job of rehabbing it, and they're not caring who they rent to.
Unfortunately, we're going to have to have you stop.
Thank you.
Sorry. But you do raise a good point, but we do have to abide by the rules, which is one minute and maybe the League will take your advice under consideration. The next question will go to Justin first, and it's on fireworks. How do you plan on enforcing the no fireworks policy?
Well, I think we kind of saw a pendulum shift in the firework debate. You know, originally, the city said, "Well, we're going to follow the state and we're going to keep it as open as possible." And we saw what happened there. You know, imagine, you know, what do all you do on your 21st birthday? It was legal to drink. What do you do? I, I'm just guessing, but I know what most people do on their 21st birthday. It's the same effect. All of a sudden, we had fireworks banned for years, and then for the first time, people can buy them and use them. I think we had sort of an overuse. I think that would have declined over time. I mean, there's been fireworks in my neighborhood every year that I've lived there. Them being banned never prevented them. What I'd like to see is perhaps a shorter timeframe where people can use them so that we don't have to listen to it, we don't have to smell it, we don't have to have scared dogs and scared children waking up at night. You know, if we narrowed the use down to fewer days, I think that would have been more appropriate than an outright ban.
Dale?
I have zero tolerance for fireworks. They, it's no secret where the problem houses are coming from. The police know, the neighbors know, dispatch knows. These were not fireworks. These were explosives that were going off in our neighborhoods. And when it comes to that, again, zero tolerance. I would implement a fine and I would, I would suggest that after the second day, we would know where the problems were and we would work to curtail them.
Thank you, and Keith?
I support the ban as well. Being in the ambulance business for the first time ever in the 12 years that I've been in that business here, we had ambulance response for people who were seriously injured as a result of using fireworks. Also, when I was out knocking doors in a couple of neighborhoods, one of the gentlemen asked me about the fireworks ordinance, and then he pointed down to a whole basket full of used-up fireworks that had ended up in his yard. Yeah, they shoot from my yard, but they end up in Dale's yard or Justin's yard, and that's just not acceptable. And we've got too many houses in this community, particularly in District Three, that are 100-plus years old, that people were terrified they were going to catch on fire, and I don't blame them. So I don't support, let the professionals use fireworks, go down to the river. That's where it needs to be.
Just a question to the audience real quick. Can you hear okay? Okay, great. I wanted to make sure. This next one's going to go to Dale first and it's on guns. And yes, it's going to be hard to answer in a minute, but if you could just give us an overview. Do we have a problem with misuse of guns and why?
Yeah, it's obvious that, and it's no more different here than many other communities. Kids nowadays have easy access to firearms. There's, there's no way around it. When we were young, we didn't have the accessibility. Now you can go to any pawn shop and buy whatever you need. Not only do you need, you don't have to go to the pawn shop. Kids in every high school in Cedar Rapids know how to get guns. And so, yes, there's a problem. To answer the rest of it in a comprehensive way would be a little bit too much.
Could you repeat that question for me, Lou?
Sure. Keith, it is, do we have a problem with nuisance of guns and why? Misuse of guns and why?
Well, we absolutely do. As I sit at the Public Safety Committee, I listen to Chief German explain each month, we're getting more and more shots fired throughout the community. I know the three of us where we live, we hear shots fired all the time. As a former police officer, I do not support everybody having a gun. I don't support automatic weapons that are outside of the need for hunting. We definitely have a problem with guns, and Dale is absolutely right. Part of that problem is access. What you do about that, I couldn't answer in 30 days, let alone 30 seconds, so.
Thank you. We have one more on gun violence. Justin, I'm sorry. Just keep me on task.
It's your first time?
Yeah.
So, I mean, obviously misuse of guns is a problem. I was a block away from the murder, the most recent murder that happened, eating dinner behind my friend Angie's house. We heard the shots fired. That's a huge problem. Another huge problem is that it was daylight and nobody's willing to come forward and speak about who did the shooting. Somebody knows. It's probably multiple people that know. That's a huge problem. I want to repair that problem where there's this rift between the community and the police department right now. I want to heal that rift so that people feel comfortable coming forward so that we can root out who is doing this misuse of firearms. The chief also says, he's a regular at our neighborhood meetings, that the number-one reason these guns are getting in the wrong hands is because people leave them in their cars and their cars are unlocked. That's a problem, and I think that takes education and it takes an active community to both solve where the guns are coming from and also solve who's doing this problem and getting it reported appropriately.
Okay. And as I said before, this next question is on gun violence. And from the Second Amendment to guns in schools and automatic weapons, what's your approach to reducing gun violence in Cedar Rapids? Keith?
Well, part of what Justin said is absolutely correct. We, the police department has to build a relationship in those neighborhoods where people will feel comfortable in making reports of crime, criminal activity, gun violence, what have you. I'm a big supporter of community-based policing, in which the police officers are out interacting with the community and addressing a variety of issues with respect to crime and gun violence in terms of improving neighborhoods through the Safe CR. in terms of improving neighborhoods through the Safe CR ordinance and a variety of different attacks in each one of these neighborhoods, because they have more problem, there are more issues and more crime-related issues than simply gun violence. There's a whole lot of other things that make it very, very challenging to police those areas.
Justin?
Yeah, I'm involved in a group called Stop the Violence, and we've been holding regular picnics at Redmond Park to try and connect the community with the police department. Many of you probably saw a video, this was a couple of years ago, where there was a police officer dancing with some neighbor kids. And the video went viral, it hit over 300,000 views. And building that gap between the police and the community is something I've been working on for several years. Crime in Wellington Heights is actually down a lot over the last several years. This is something I've been saying for the last several years, if you've been seeing me on TV representing the Neighborhood Association, crime in Wellington Heights is down about 40%. And there's a lot of initiatives that went into that, but I think part of that is that we're just trying to gap the community and the police bridge, to make the neighborhood a safer place, to encourage people to want to live there and want to raise their kids there. It's a great neighborhood, I really love it down there. And I think if we make it a safer neighborhood, where more people have ownership, then they'll be more willing to report the gun violence.
Dale, it's your turn to answer that question.
It's not the first time our community has dealt with gun violence. We dealt with it in 96 to 98. We put, we provided kids with opportunities, we worked to strengthen the neighborhood. Kids nowadays, they lack the conflict resolution skills that they should have. Justin and I serve on the Warren Task Force, where we talk to felons who are just out of the system, and we remind them that if they're involved with guns, it doesn't make a lot of sense, they can go to jail for a federal offense. Today, I met with the U.S. Attorney, and what we did in the past, we know full and well who is involved with gun violence, who's packing, who's carrying weapons, and who's using. Those people we go after, and we, there's zero tolerance. But the whole question, it's a complicated question, because you see high levels of gun violence where there's poverty, where kids have nothing to do, where there is a lack of hope, and those, so it's a comprehensive thing that you do. That's why I'm on the set task force the last two years, trying to pull those answers together.
Thank you. Our next question's going to go to Justin first, and this is on public transportation. And there's, it's two parts. Should city buses run later at night, and how do you plan to support public transportation?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of key issues to go into public transportation, but I think we're also, we also have a lack of adequate public transportation. I bet none of you took the bus here, because you wouldn't be getting home right now, because the buses stop at 6:00. Most people don't know that our busing stops at 6:00 o'clock, and it doesn't run on Sundays. This is tough for people who, you know, have day jobs that, in the evening, if they want to get anything, it makes it really tough when our public transportation stops so early. I think there's a lot of ways where we can also work on our public transportation formulas, so that it's best serving the people who need it, to get them where they need to go. There's a lot of people who I've heard that have struggled with different public transportation issues, that, you know, the bus just, you know, if they could just go three blocks further, it would help them a lot. For example, the bus stops at Marion Walmart, but a lot of people need to go to the Marion Police Department, so they have to walk across Highway 13 to get there. That's a problem.
Dale?
Yeah, this is, it's, Keith referenced it earlier when we talked about food access, inner-city food access. It's an issue of mass. Remember, you know, Grand Avenue? There used to be a trolley that went down the middle of Grand Avenue, First Avenue. When you had people concentrated in the core of the city, you could justify that transportation need and pay for it. What happened, when we sprawled, when we built on the fringe of town and spread everything out, we lost the mass. And so, that's one of the benefits of seeing development happen now in the core of the city, is that hopefully, over time soon, we'll have the numbers that'll be able to justify those longer runs throughout town. Right now, the NTS is a great tool. I was involved in getting that started 20 years ago, but it's a good question.
Keith?
Yes, I think that there's a lot of transportation in Cedar Rapids. The problem is, it's all disconnected and disjointed. You've got lifts, you've got the city bus, you've got the Neighborhood Transportation Service, which is a not-for-profit, partially funded by the city, and their sole purpose is to go out after hours and go curb-to-curb and take people to work that otherwise don't have transportation after hours. Just simply adding hours to the city bus is not going to solve the problem. As Dale says, there has to be more mass. What I would propose is getting these different services together, to the rescue, Neighborhood Services, City Bus, a variety of different, Special K, a variety of different transportation vehicles out here, companies and organizations, getting them together, and let's come up with a solution, a public-private partnership, where we can fill that gap until we get the necessary mass that would support a city bus extra hours.
Thank you. The next one is, what do, you know, go to Dale first, what do you think is the most important issue affecting District 3, and how does that go with your goals for the district it elected?
I, I think for, you know, it's a comprehensive answer, but it involves stabilization of the core neighborhoods, Wellington Heights and near northwest side. You've got, you've got some real disparity as far as incomes, as far as diversity, and, but they're, they're actually not that far apart. And so, really, I see the issues of poverty and crime. We've got flood protection, for the most part, taken care of on one side of the river. We don't have it on the check village side, but that'll happen here real soon. I see us replicating what we've done in New Bohemia to the neighborhoods that touch it. And so, that, for this point in time, that's what I see as the most stressful issue.
Okay, next is Keith.
Yes, I see distressed neighborhoods in District 3 as being our core driver, our most important issue to deal with. And along with that comes infrastructure issues, sewers, streets, and there's folks that have, in our district, that have, their houses aren't anywhere near the river, but they flood, their basements flood every single time it rains five drops. We need to address those kinds of infrastructure issues. We need to stay with the basics and work towards neighborhood quality of life issues, which includes public safety, but also includes, as we've talked about before, affordable housing. But you've got to have that infrastructure there to support, to support that affordable housing.
Justin?
Yeah, I think the city as a whole, the number-one issue is infrastructure. Our roads were neglected for years, for decades. And we're trying to catch up now, but it's, it goes beyond roads. Infrastructure goes well beyond roads. You know, as Keith mentioned, we've got regular flooding in Wellington Heights. It has the name "Heights" in it, why are we flooding? It's because we have an issue that goes beyond the roads. It goes into our sewers. We don't have adequate sewers in a lot of places. I know there's infrastructure problems, for example, down in Sun Valley, and they're flooding regularly. There's infrastructure, you know, the flood wall would be infrastructure. I think there's a lot of ways that if we improved our infrastructure, we would naturally see a lot of improvements that go around it. I'll give you a quick example. In front of my house, a few years ago, the curb rolled out into the street. The curb just fell off and rolled out in the middle of the street. That's a problem. If the city's unwilling to invest in our neighborhood infrastructure, it's hard to invest in our neighborhoods ourselves.
Okay, we'll go on to the next question, and Keith, you're going to be first up on this, and it's on traffic cameras. Do you support the collection of traffic camera fines? Why or why not?
Well, for me, in the ambulance world, it's really not about the fines. When the cameras were in operation, I have statistical, we kept statistics, the number of calls for injuries as a result of accidents in those areas that were covered by cameras went down significantly. That's what's important to me. If the city can have those cameras for fines, whatever their other purpose is, but for me, I know what the accident, the serious injury accident rate declined substantially when those cameras were there. And I also know, since the cameras are not there, that our injury accident calls are starting to inch back up.
Justin?
You know, we were told just a couple of years ago that the camera fines were not enforceable. And then all of a sudden, now we're being told that it's going to be taken out of our income taxes from the state. They're going to enforce the collection of those cameras. I don't like that sudden shift where we tell everybody, hey, it's, you know, we don't have a way to enforce these, we can't ding your credit, we can't ding your insurance, we can't send it to collections, and then all of a sudden, we're tacking it onto people's taxes. I'm not a big fan of that approach. It seems misleading to me, and it seems like a money grab. That's just, that's just an opinion, but that's what it feels like when we're tacking on and trying, really trying to chase after that money. It seems like we're chasing the money.
Okay, this one's on development.
Dale? I hate traffic cameras.
We've all been skipped once, Lou, so it's all even.
Yeah.
You know, I, I support them to a degree. I especially support the one on the S-curve. I call that dead man's curve, and I've seen some terrible accidents there. I've also received a ticket or two in my day. But at the same time, what I think, what I would do, and this came to me the other day, each year, I would, the first one, I would, I would give you the benefit of the doubt on that one. I'd give everybody one freebie, because a lot of times, it happens when you simply aren't thinking. And this is another case where you know who the habitual speeders are, and I've got no, you know, let's go after those folks. But it gives the impression that the city is doing it simply for a money grab. And that has certainly left a bad taste in the Mount Semen.
Okay. The next question's on development, and it's going to go to Justin first. Do you support the construction of the building of a skyscraper as proposed across from Smulacox?
As it sits right now, I'm not a fan of the One Park Place project. It's a roughly $100 million project that the city plans to pay $20 million upfront. And it's my understanding that even with the $20 million upfront, the developer's struggling to acquire financing for this project, which tells me that this is a risky project. And the last thing I want to see is a project that's heavily financed, go in our downtown, and then maybe we see a downturn in the national economy. Maybe the developer just struggles financially and doesn't lease as much space as expected, and then all of a sudden, we're sitting with an empty building downtown. I'm not a fan of seeing this huge upfront, heavy-risk project go downtown. I think there are better options, it's very valuable land, we can really get something great there, and I just don't think this is it.
Dale?
You know, I, one of the earlier questions, questions we had was about a downtown grocery store. And this would have a downtown grocery store in it. I believe that there's still a pretty significant gap in the project, but as far as the concept goes, I support the concept. This is going back to Urban Planning 101, having people in downtown again, re-establishing the core, getting enough mass there so that you could subsidize and sustain grocery stores and other types of businesses. The reality is that the city's going to have to take risks. And do they all work? No. But if you don't do anything, you don't go anywhere. And that is the competitive nature that cities have nowadays. That's one of the compelling questions we have to ask ourselves. Where do we want to be in 20 years?
Okay, the next one.
Oh, how are you going to get me again?
Keith, really, my little dots here. Keith, you're next. Do you want me to repeat the question?
No, no, I got it. I support a project built by someone who can support the project. And this person's ability to fund this project is pretty dubious at best. I also support the other two plans that were presented by developers who have a long history with this community and their commitment to it and their ability to fund, pay for, and make successful projects downtown. So I don't support this particular project because of the issues with the developer. I do support a project there, and I would want to, if I was on the council, I would relook at Mr. Emerson's and Mr. Timko's proposals, and take a very serious look at them.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to the question on TIF, and that goes to Dale first. The pros and cons of the TIF and why. That's all they wrote.
You know, cities, when you want to make a project happen, cities simply don't have many tools to make those things happen. When we talk in particular about affordable housing, there's a, you know, there's a gap that needs to be filled sometimes, especially, and that's in order to keep rents affordable and low, so that you can accommodate whatever demographic you're trying to appeal to. And so, so there ends up being a gap. And cities, you know, they, they don't have outright cash that they can give a developer or a project, but they do, and this is a case where, in fact, with Hy-Vee, First Avenue Hy-Vee, we use TIF money to incentivize Hy-Vee to stay there at that location, where we use the taxes that they would pay to help with the cost of their building. It's an appropriate use. You can certainly point to cases throughout the state where people have maybe went too far, but cities don't have a lot of choices.
Thank you. Keith?
Yes, I support TIF districts, for just as Dale suggested, that's the primary means in which a city can incentivize a developer to take on a risky project, for example. So I support those as our main vehicle to incentivize that development downtown and in other areas and neighborhoods of our district. I don't think that it's, I don't think it's been overused. I think it's been used by our current and prior councils very judiciously, as a matter of fact.
Justin?
I'm not as big a fan of TIFs. Really, when you look at it, at the end of the day, a TIF is just, it's a large tax break. I think there's times where it can be valuable, for example, restoring a brown field or a gray field, but I think that we've overused TIFs. I think the same developers are over and over and over getting these large tax breaks, and I think that's a problem. I look at the Fountains project, for example. Why did the Fountains need a 10-year tax break? I look at some projects, though, that I think were good use. I think Reining Rose was a good use. I think that cleaned up that area a lot. But overall, I think the number-one problem we have with TIFs is that we don't have it defined in Cedar Rapids on when we're going to choose when to use it and when not. It's kind of, it almost feels to me like, oh, this project's cool, let's give it a big tax break. I'm not a big fan of that approach. I want to see it defined, I want to see it used for specific things that we know the city needs.
Right. Okay, this is kind of a longer question on housing, and it's going to go to you first, Keith. The Housing Nuisance Ordinance applies equally to both owners, occupied, and rental properties, and these numbers are very close in terms of violations. What would you propose to help individuals improve their properties, both owner-occupied and rental, in your neighborhood?
Well, I think there's, there's things that can be, that can be done in terms of identifying some revenue streams that people could be able to have access to. A lot of the redevelopment in District 3 has occurred as a result of the Affordable Housing Network and two or three other, two or three other organizations, Four Oaks... Housing Network and two or three other, two or three other organizations, Four Oaks, and I think there's some, I think that there's opportunity for us to do, to continue to do that sort of thing. It's not a, it's not an easy, it's definitely not an easy fix.
Justin?
I think the number one way we're going to see these sort of incidents decrease is by stabilizing and improving our neighborhoods. See, I think the reason that a lot of these properties eventually go downhill is, one is, is there's just a lack of ownership. It's a lot of, there's areas with a lot of high rental, high density, and when you have pride in ownership, usually you keep your property up better. I, I think there's some instances where perhaps, you know, I've seen disabled people that own houses that struggle to mow the grass. You know, I'd rather see us work with those people than, than send them a letter, a sort of, sort of ominous letter in the mail saying, you know, you're in violation of code section, whatever. There's, there's got to be a more personal way to approach a lot of these issues. I think if, if the city was better at communicating with, especially these properties going downhill, we'd see a lot of improvements come naturally.
And Dale?
You know, keep in mind, when we talk about nuisance abatement and fractions, there's the criminal ones where you've got a house that's been out of control, they're dealing crack, you know, that's one issue. But when it, when it ends up being a building code violation, there are things that we could do. And I chaired the Safe, Equitable, Thriving Task Force, the Housing Subcommittee the last two years. It's given resources to people like Habitat for Humanity, Matthew 25, you know, Affordable Housing Network, those folks, but at the same time realizing, letting homeowners know that there's tools out there, whether it's through historic preservation grants, whether it's grants that the city actually has, that sort of incentivize and help pay the cost for a new coat of paint, new shingles on the roof, those kind of things. But you'd also do that by making sure that people feel safe in their neighborhoods. People feel safe and they're willing to invest in their housing stock.
Great. Let's go on. We have another one on the casino that, Justin, this is going to go to you first. And I think it's casino or not, it seems to me the three of you are not using this as a stepping stone and are sincerely committed to making Cedar Rapids the best it can be. If this is possible without a casino, oh, is this possible without a casino? If so, what are your suggestions?
Absolutely, it's possible. The number one, the number one piece of proof I have is look at our city now. I think we have a great city, and we don't have a casino. A casino can really be a mixed bag, I think. I mean, I've never been in one. I have no desire to ever go in one. But look at who the regulars are in a casino. And, you know, really, to answer the question, we just, we live in a great city. And so to say that a casino is what's going to make our city great, it's just not accurate. I think there's so many other things we can highlight, that we can emphasize, and I want to work to, to expand on that, to make the city even better.
Dale?
You know, I'm going to go back to what I said earlier. When the time comes, we'll know what the appropriate use for that site is if, in the event that a casino doesn't happen. I do, I am aware of, there, there is a need for additional hotel space downtown. When the DoubleTree is filled, we lose convention business because there's not another building for people to access and use as far as room usage. But I'm completely content to let it sit there a little bit longer until we build up more mass in downtown and determine what the appropriate use would be, instead of trying to come up with a quick fix or stick something there that five, 10 years down the road will regret.
Keith?
We can definitely succeed and succeed very, very well without a casino. A casino, for me, is just, that's, that's an added nice thing to have, but it's in no way, shape, form, or fashion something that we must have. Look at what's been done with the theater Cedar Rapids, Paramount, Newbo, Czech Village. Look at all that's going on down in the Westdale Mall area. This city's growing, expanding. Look at, look at the CRST building downtown. We've got all kinds of, all kinds of projects and things that are going on without regard to a casino. I think one of the things that, that I know some of my friends that are, that are on the Hawkeye Downs Board are working on, I think we all recognize it would be nice for us to create some sort of grouping of things to make Cedar Rapids a destination, and that you can come here for a weekend and take advantage of several different things. And I know there's a lot of plans out at Hawkeye Downs to help make that a destination as well.
Our next question, because I asked everyone that one, right?
Right.
Okay. It's on zoning, and it's going to go to Dale first. It appears some homeowners are setting up businesses, like junk collectors, home businesses, tear-outs, at their homes, zone residential, leading to blight and decreased property values. How would you propose abating this?
This is the nuisance abatement ordinance. This is why you have that. Because historically, I mean, when you go to the courts, you know, you can be tied up in the courts for years. In fact, we have been. I can give you addresses of houses that have been tied up for years. And so that's, that's part of my discussion. When we go to nuisance abatement ordinance, we've got enough data and we have enough, we know who the problem properties are. The problem is, how do you take that to the next level and concentrate on those folks and disincentivize it so that they don't do that practice anymore? That's a legal question that we have to address with the Iowa Legislature. The first thing is, you need to call the city and make the complaint. And you can do that anonymously. Call me, I'll make it, but you have to get the ball rolling.
Thank you. Keith?
Yes, as Dale said, the abatement, no, this is nuisance abatement ordinance is exactly, that's the, that's the primary purpose, is to deal with these kind of zoning issues. And unfortunately, in District 3, we have a lot of folks that are running businesses of a variety of different kinds out of their residences in violation of zoning. And as Dale says, you need to call in, and we need to keep hammering away through Safe CR, through the police department, through code enforcement. We just need to keep hammering away and chipping away, and Dale's absolutely right. We know, the city certainly knows who the major violators are, and we need to do a full court press on those folks.
Justin?
Yeah, I run a small business out of my house. I own a pressure washing company. I've got a pickup, and it's illegal to park my pickup in my garage. So I think this is kind of a double-edged sword. I think there's obviously people who abuse running a small business out of their house, creating large piles of junk, being an undesirable neighbor, but I think that's different than someone trying to make a living. I work very hard. I've been working all morning and all day. I just finished not too long ago. And, and when the city told me it was illegal to park my pickup in my garage, that didn't make sense to me. I asked them, you know, can I park it on the street? It's a public street. They said, yeah, that's fine, right in front of my house. I could park my pickup in front of my house, but it's illegal to park in my garage. So I think we need to really go into these zoning codes. I wish I had more time to talk about zoning, because I got a number of issues that I've had that I want to bring forward, but we need to go through it and really give a comprehensive overview and change it.
Thank you. Next is on housing again. Keith, this is going to go to you first. How will you promote infill instead of sprawl in our city?
Well, I think, I think, as I mentioned earlier this evening, I think infill is critically important, particularly in our core neighborhoods in District 3. That's where we already have the infrastructure. We already have the streets, sidewalks, the lights, the sewers, and it's far less expensive to redevelop those properties in, within that, within those neighborhoods. What's important, though, is to make sure that what's built there is compatible with the type of, of housing that is in that neighborhood. To impose projects that don't fit the neighborhood in there is extremely inappropriate. So the infill is important. It's critical to our, to our core neighborhoods, and we just need to make sure that what's being built there fits in well with what's already in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Justin?
You know, infill would be desirable if our neighborhoods were more stable. People would want to build in our neighborhoods. I think infill's really valuable for strengthening the core of the city. I think there's a number of organizations, like Cedar Valley Habitat for Humanity, who is very conscientious, and I think they do a great job with promoting that infill. But in order to encourage that infill, I think we have to strengthen our neighborhoods. So there's really a lot of issues that go into this question, but if we just made it more desirable, it'd be a lot easier to create that infill.
Thank you. Dale?
The, the city really needs to be commended on their Roots program. Since the flood, the Roots program is built more than, I would almost say, 200 homes. Literally, the Taylor neighborhood was almost nonexistent. And now you go there, and there's, there's life, there's houses. If you go down Ellis Boulevard, there's houses. In Oak Hill Jackson, you know, there were, there were homes added. This has been a very successful program. In fact, we're almost at the point where there's not many vacant lots left around town, at least in the core. And so infill is critical. It's tough to do, as Keith mentioned. When you do those infill homes, let's make sure that they're built right.
Okay. This next one is on housing again, and Justin, you're going to be first. What is your position about establishing a housing commission to study and address housing-related concerns, development, et cetera?
I think a housing commission would be a huge asset to our city. I think there's a lot of ways that a housing commission can both study what type of housing we need, where we need it, where things can be most effective, and, and really, I mean, that'd be very valuable. I know there've been people asking for a housing commission for a long time, and really, I'd be very supportive. I'd like to see a group of citizens step up and really dive deep into this issue of housing, because there are a lot of problems with our current housing stock that, that I think could be fixed with the right approach.
Dale?
And, and so I mentioned earlier that I chair the Housing Task Force, so the SEC Committee. This is an area, too, where, you know, when we talk about a Housing Task Force, what are we talking about? Are we talking about rental housing? Are we talking about stabilization of neighborhoods? Are we talking about building new housing? Are we talking about affordable housing? So I think you really need to quantify what it is you want to get done. I talked to business owners, large business owners, who are clamoring because they, they believe that the community needs more affordable housing. And you can look at market studies that the city does, and, and it's real obvious that there is a need. But at the same time, there's other needs. There's, there's needs about access, or need, there's issues about affordability, civil rights, you know, how, how that plays into the whole discussion about housing. And so I think, I'm not adverse to, to any kind of discussion, but we need to, we need to quantify exactly what it is we want to do.
Keith?
Yes, I, I think, I agree with Justin, and I think the city needs a housing commission, but as Dale suggests, that role and responsibility for that housing commission needs to be clearly defined and spelled out so that its, its purpose and its, and its focus is where it needs to be, whatever that turns out, however that turns out to be. But it needs to be clearly defined, as is so many of our other commissions, to just make sure that it's performing in the way in which it was intended when it, when it gets, when it's put together.
Okay. Next is housing again, and it goes to Dale. We've heard much about developers, nonprofits tonight. What will you propose for assisting, working with small operators to improve, to provide diversity? Does that make sense?
Well, it, it could, I mean.
Yeah. You're lucky to talk to a working manager.
You know, the reality, no matter what an elected official can do, you have to go to a bank, and you have to sell your story to the banker, because they're going to be the ones that are going to loan you the mortgage, the money for the mortgage. And so what we've done before is help people make their case. And, you know, the, the good news is, in this community, my experience is, if you, if you make a sound case, if your numbers make sense, if you've done the right things, the community and, and, and the business community will step up and help.
Keith?
Could you repeat that, please?
Sure. We've heard much about developers, nonprofits tonight. What will you propose for, I think it's assisting, working with small operators to promote diversity?
Well, I, I agree with Dale. I think that, that this business community does step up. I think without the business community, after the flood of 2008, we'd be, we'd be, we'd still be swimming, I think. To, so I guess my thought would be to connect those small developers to the resources that they need, whether it be other people in the business community, the banking community, whatever resources they need. Help them, as a council, we could help them, direct them to those resources that they need to be able to perform, to be able to do some of that development.
Justin?
I want to expand a little beyond development and just talk business as a whole. I think the city treats large businesses pretty well, but I think a lot of times, small businesses have to jump through a lot of hoops, a lot of red tape, and I know because I've experienced it personally. We need to encourage small business owners. We need to encourage people to start up, take that risk, become innovative, and build our city. Small business is the heart of a community. Small business employs a lot of people, and we need to encourage that with our zoning codes, and we need to encourage that from a city leader standpoint. I want to see a lot more small businesses start up. I want to see people starting stuff on the side, being productive, being good citizens. These people are starting these small businesses. They're good people, and I want to really encourage them to make that investment and, and grow. A lot of our companies started as small businesses. Look at Rockwell, it started in a garage. I want to see more of that.
Okay. This one's on zoning, and Keith, you're going to go first. What zoning issues can we improve on?
Well, just about any of them, I think. I think the whole issue of zoning needs to be revisited. I think as this community has changed significantly in, in, since 2008 flood, I think that some of those zoning ordinances actually caused more problems than they resolved. So I think that we should take a, a broad look at our entire zoning ordinance, all of our zoning ordinances, and see what of those should be revised or changed in some way to make it more, more appropriate for our current demographics and our current, the current way the city is laid out.
Justin?
I wish I had 15 minutes to talk about this. I've got so much I could say on this topic. But I'm going to give you a little story to demonstrate why I feel how I feel. In the neighborhood, we built 25 Little Free Libraries. The Little Free Libraries, it's a leave a book, take a book concept. We put them all throughout Wellington Heights. There's not a kid more than two blocks away from books in the neighborhood. We were about to put those up in the neighborhood, and we were stopped by the city. The city called them exterior structures and said we had to fill out 25 permits, 25 separate permits, for this thing that's about the size of a mailbox. We didn't have the funds to do that, first of all, and second of all, we had plans to put them up the day after, after we were notified about it. So I asked them, well, what are you going to do if we just put them up? And the staff person said, well, we're going to come, we're going to tear them out. I was appalled by that. I couldn't believe that answer. That is not the attitude we need to have. Zoning needs to encourage investment, not prevent investment.
Dale?
The city is currently updating their comprehensive zoning plan. It's a pretty significant process. I was involved in the last time they did it, in 1999, 2000. Zoning, zoning is a tool that's actually used, it's put in place to protect the risk of property owners. And my experience today, and not to say that there aren't periodically issues, it's my belief that the city's working real hard to try to accommodate people, especially since the flood. Is there a staffer that might throw cold water on an idea? Yeah, that's going to happen. But after that, you take that to the council. And my, you know, again, if the project makes sense, if there's support, usually it's getting done.
Okay. Next, we're going to go to Justin, and the question is, our district is very diverse, both culturally and economically. What do you think can be done to ensure that this all District 3 residents feel included and equally represented by the person representing the district?
I've worked with a wide variety of people over the last few years, but as president of the Wellington Heights Neighborhood Association for four years, I really got to work with people who I hadn't worked with in the past. I grew up in an upper-middle-class neighborhood, northeast side, and moving to Wellington Heights when I was 21 showed me what a neighborhood like that has. I want to include everyone on the council. I eat regularly, I eat lunch at the Mission of Hope, just to talk with, I was actually encouraged to, just to talk with a lot of the homeless people there, just to try and give them a little hope. Sometimes these low-income people just need a little hope. And so I'm willing to work with everybody. I want everybody to be raised up. A rising tide will lift all boats, and I want to work with each and every one of you, and everyone from the poorest to the wealthiest people in the district, to make sure that we're all benefiting.
Dale?
I think one of the things that we don't take into account is that the demographics in our community here in Cedar Rapids, and in fact in Iowa, are going to significantly change here. They've been changing the last 20 years since I've been here, and they're going to continue to change. And so we're going to have to, you know, work with and communicate with people that historically some of us might not have been used to dealing with. But, you know, yesterday I was over on the northwest side, and I ran into some guys from Lawndale in Chicago. I grew up in Woodland, but I was able to talk to them. And so it's important to be able to talk to all different types of people, to understand where they come from, what compels them to do what it is that they do. And I've got a track record of doing that in this community, and I'll continue to do that in a leadership position on the council.
Keith?
Well, I think one of the, one of the issues, particularly for District 3, but not only for District 3, throughout the city, is accessibility of your council person. I would set up quarterly meetings with each of the homeowners' associations, come out and meet with those homeowners' associations on a quarterly basis, and update them on what's going on with the city council, issues I thought were important. Also, I would get the opportunity to listen to what their issues are and what concerns them. And at least twice a year, outside of the homeowners' associations, I would set up at least twice a year, different locations for meetings for anyone who would want to come and participate. And I think it's a matter of making oneself available to their constituents.
Thank you. This next one's on young adults, and Dale, you will go first. How do you keep young professionals in Cedar Rapids?
The key is, and we've been working hard to do that, it's all based on this concept of live, work, play, learn. Young adults nowadays, they learn, they work in a different environment than we are used to. They don't work in a building with cubicles, they work in their coffee shop, or they work in their apartment. And so this whole new way of work, we have to accommodate that in housing, we have to accommodate that in our neighborhoods, and we've been trying to do that in New Bohemia. And I think we've got a good template in place because we've been pretty successful. Our units are full of people who fit that demographic. The key is, it's a balance between quality of life, people need to feel safe in your community, and then you have to provide them with things to do in a healthy work environment. For the first time, we've got people who are young, who are moving to Cedar Rapids. Our job now is to make sure they stay.
Keith?
Yes, the, young adults have a very different expectation of their workplace and their quality of life. And I think Geonetrick is a great example down in Newbo of how that work-life, when you go into Geonetrick and look around, that's what it's going to look like more and more and more as time goes along. And people, particularly the young folks, also want an active social life. They want to have some things to do, they want to have some amenities, and I think we constantly are going to have to address that, and it's going to be a struggle for Cedar Rapids for a while to be able to provide those, but we have to be very conscious of that. But the whole work-life environment is going to change, it has changed, and it's going to change even more substantially over the next decade.
You know, I'm a millennial. I know that's sometimes not a term that's, that people think of millennials and they, a lot of them, it doesn't give them the warm fuzzy feeling. But I guarantee you, because I've seen a lot of them, there's a lot of great millennials, and I think we can attract a lot of those great millennials to live here. One thing I want to provide on the council as a millennial is that different perspective. Right now, the youngest person on the council is Mayor Corbett. You know, let that sink in a bit. The youngest person is, on the council is Mayor Corbett. I want to provide a different perspective, a perspective that knows what it's like to be a millennial. I live here because it's affordable, I've got family here, and it's just a great place to live. I want to encourage that and encourage my other millennials to want to live here because they're our future. We cannot sustain Cedar Rapids without them. So that would definitely be a focus of mine, is to attract those young professionals.
We've got another question on youth, and this one, Keith, you'll be first up. How would you propose to provide a gathering place and recreational facilities for kids in Wellington Heights?
Well, I think that, I think that if you have, if you take the Jane Boyd example and expand upon that and replicate that in some way, in some fashion, in Wellington Heights, and make it more, put it somewhere in Wellington Heights so that it's accessible to the kids that live in that neighborhood, I think that that's, that's a good, a good model to start with.
Great. Justin?
You know, I mentioned the little free libraries that we put up, and that was just, it was kind of a Band-Aid over a major problem, which is lack of things for youth in Wellington Heights in particular. I know that was mentioned in the question to do. I know that St. Paul's Church on Third Avenue is actually looking at building a recreational center and trying to staff it. That'd be a huge benefit to our neighborhood, and I've been trying to support it. I've actually donated towards the project myself, and I'd love to see a non-government entity step up and do that. You know, we look at what the Northwest Rec Center does and how many people it services. You know, if we had that in Wellington Heights, we've got a ton of kids who just walk, walk on the streets all day. And if you go to McKinley right now, I guarantee you, you know, it's dark now, but I'm pretty sure there's probably kids playing basketball out there. You see it all the time. A rec center would be huge for our neighborhood.
And Dale?
One of the problems is that actually, if you do go to McKinley now, you will see nobody playing basketball there because the school's closed. And one of the first things we did, we opened the schools, we opened Johnson, we opened McKinley, we opened Polk. That's how I ended up in office. We took down the basketball groups at Polk School, and kids had nowhere to go in that neighborhood. We, I would put, I would structure Redmond Park so it's safer, the kids feel safer to go there. I would hire somebody to run it. We've got the Boys and Girls Club across the street from Johnson, but we would open Johnson more. The best model out there was the program that Mary Wazinski put together, the Summer Youth Coalition. I would get that thing going again. We worked with the churches to open up the churches during the summertime and provide meeting space, and we put, did things like put splash pads and playgrounds in places like Johnson and Redmond Park. And it's landlocked, the biggest challenge right now is making sure you keep Johnson School open.
Okay. This is going to be our last question, and then we're going to go to your closing statements. And please, if you had a question that wasn't answered tonight, I imagine these folks will stick around, and you can talk with them afterwards. This last one is on flash flooding. What approach do you propose for addressing flash flooding in neighborhoods such as Grand Avenue? And that goes to you first, Justin.
I bought my house in, it was three years ago now, and two days before I bought my house was the flash flooding of 2014. There was a car swept down the street and up onto my front lawn the day before I was supposed to close on my house. This flash flooding was caused by a lack of adequate sewer systems. You know, a lot of people talk about how bad the roads are, but I think we need to go a step further. And look, you know, we've got a lot of places where our sewers are inadequate. Along Grand Avenue, those houses flood regularly. That's unacceptable. This city is responsible for adequate sewage systems that'll push that water away from our houses, keep water out of our basements. I was talking with a gentleman who lives down in Sun Valley, and they created a berm, and there's a flow valve that lets water out of the berm. The problem is that the flow valve has been stuck open many times by brush, and water just ends up flowing back to the houses. That's a problem.
Thank you. Dale?
I've lost two cars. I live on Grand Avenue. We tried to address the issue, and I think in 1999, we increased the size of the storm sewer underneath Grand Avenue. The water comes in from the alleys. This is, it's an issue. People are moving now because of the constant flooding. This also is an issue of, it's about leadership. The city council simply has not realized that there is enough political capital or clout to move a project around in the capital improvement budget to make something happen. Until you have enough capital to get that done, it's still going to languish up there amongst all the other capital improvement projects. And so as a council member, I would work as hard as I could to make that a priority. It impacts, I mean, that's part of the Cedar Lake watershed, and there are, there are studies that are going on now that are helping to determine what's making it happen.
Thank you. And Keith?
Well, going forward, the city council is going to have to make several very tough decisions because there's only so much money. And as we, I believe all three of us stand fast to say that infrastructure, streets, sewers are top priority, and that's what's going to have to happen, is here's a set of pri, here's a set of projects, we're going to have to prioritize those projects and then make the commitment to, to stick with those priorities. And streets and sewers have to be right at the, streets, sewers, flood protection and public safety have to be right at the top of that list. And as Dale says, they're going, the council's going to have to exercise political courage to make some of those tough decisions. But when we've got people whose basements flood regularly, or they're subjected to flash flooding as they are on Grand Avenue and nothing happens, we're losing those people, that's just irresponsible on our part as a city.
Thank you. Now we're going to have closing statements, and why don't we just go straight down the line, and we'll start with you, Justin. You'll have two minutes.
I don't think you're going to find anyone that's more passionate about doing this than I am. And I want to tell a little story that kind of defines how I want to do my work on the council. A couple of years ago, there was a church in our neighborhood that owns a couple houses. The church wanted to demolish one of those houses for a parking lot. They had a severe shortage of parking. Another organization stepped in and said, you know, we'd really like to save this house. And the church said, well, it's going, so you better, you better, you better hurry up and make something happen. So that organization approached the Neighborhood Association, and approached me and another board member, and asked, you know, what can we do? We ended up donating one of our garden plots so that we could move this house, but that was a tough decision for us. You know, our community gardens, once you get rid of them, they're gone. Another organization, Affordable Housing Network, stepped in and donated two vacant plots to us, side by side, that was incapable of holding a house, it was just too small. And out of that, we got a new community garden on the corner of Fourth Avenue and 15th Street. I'd encourage every single one of you to go out there and take a look at it. Don't just look at it, go in. Go in and pick some produce, take some home with you, we always have extra produce. But out of this collaboration, what happened is the church got their parking lot, this organization got to save a home and create infill, our Neighborhood Association got a new community garden, and this other organization got rid of a lot that they couldn't use. That collaboration is what I want to see more of. I really enjoyed being a part of that project. You might have heard of the Frankie House? That was the house that was saved. Before it was saved, people were asking, why would you want to save this house? There's nothing, there's nothing historically significant about it. And today, you'd save it again because it's such a cool story. So this is the kind of collaboration I want to see with the council, and I really appreciate your support November 7th.
Keith?
I bring a great deal of both public and private sector experience to the table. I spent 20 years in municipal government and the law enforcement business, and I've spent almost that long in the private sector. I would bring a business approach, a fiscal conservative approach. I would make the difficult decisions that need to be, that need to be made. This city is at the, at the crossroads of some real opportunities and some real challenges. I've participated in a variety of different committees and commissions and groups throughout the last 12 years that I've been here. I'm proud to be the CEO of Area Ambulance. We provide a very vital, we've serviced to this community, and my folks are amazing people, and they do an amazing job here. What I would say also to you is that as voters, you have a very good problem. You're looking at three gentlemen who clearly are committed to this community, have long track records of public service voluntarily throughout the course of many, many years, and you can't go wrong with any one of these three choices. And I really appreciate the fact that you've taken time out of your day to come out here and listen to us and ask us questions of things that concern you, so I just thank you very much.
And Dale?
Thank you, Keith. Thank you. And thanks to the league, and thank you, Lou, and to this, our timer here. I'm going to see dreams of that stop sign, but, you know, I'm running because I really, this is an exciting time, and our community has moved to a point where there's some things that are occurring that I don't think any of us ever anticipated. When I, but at the same time, I struggle at times, and I get frustrated probably like some of you when I see things that are, that I believe that are bad public policy, and I'll use fireworks as an example. And so I want to use my experience and the institutional history that I bring to the table to work on some of these issues. When it comes to the neighborhoods, I was on the front line when crack cocaine came to this community, and I stared down those guys on 15th and Beaver, and we fought back. And we started the whole concept of community gardens. We worked on the zoning issues throughout the community, and I was able to leverage that in the city council. And I find myself in New Bohemia where we're building, you know, buildings that appeal to people like the Geonetrics. And so the challenge as a council member is that you have to do all those things. You have to build, you have to take risks, but you have to fix the infrastructure. And at the same time, you have to talk about the infrastructure that we don't talk about. And that's like the data highway, the high fiber that the people like Rockwell and Toyota are going to ask about. Anytime there's a new project in New Bohemia, that fiber is underground and we make sure that happens. And so, you know me, I bring to you a track record, but I've got a long history. I was in the ice arena tonight, and 21 years ago... And 21 years ago, no one would have thought that we'd have kids this day skating, playing pro hockey. And there were 60 kids there that were young, and they were doing the things that they should be doing to keep them out of trouble. So thanks for the opportunity. Best of luck to everybody.
I'd like to close the form and thank our candidates. I'd also like to thank everybody who came tonight, and your participation in this.